Other use. Oh, they gave you the twelve hundred something. They want.
I know for our layout.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You know.
One way with the.
All right.
We have like.
All right, now this is.
We're sort of telling you.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the August twenty forty five council meeting from all the borough. You rise from the place.
I put the regions to the lab and I decided to get her back. And we're going to look all over the locations again. Well, I think there's a hundred thousand individuals involved.
Welcome, everyone, if you have. So we are. I just did that from that game. That's escape that.
Yep.
It's it's originally there to remind you, because I'm like everybody. Uh, and I'm sorry, sorry, local, please.
Mayor Chee Chee.
Yeah.
President. Okay, yeah.
President.
Councilwoman Blunt. Here. How far.
There.
Councilwoman Sally. President, Councilwoman Lambert. President, Councilwoman Smythe, here, Councilman Walker.
Here. We are all present and accounted for. Uh, we do not have any awards or presentations, like.
We do not.
How about that? Well, we already on.
We did.
Easter month, the beginning of the month, so thank you. Has anyone signed up for public comment at the beginning? They have not. So we'll move on to the next order of business. Are we recording? Yes, I didn't hear that.
Did they?
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve and accept the minutes of the previous council meeting as presented by the Borough Secretary? Anyone? Mr. voters may answer second by Vice President Lambert. Any changes seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They have it. Uh, Madam Secretary, we have any communications that we've received?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we move on to reports of borough officers. Mayor Chee Chee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I am. As the President of Council mentioned, this is booster month. So, uh, as proclaimed at our caucus meeting two weeks ago. Uh, I I'd like to give a little public service announcement. You will probably be receiving, if you haven't already, a um. Solicitation in the mail from the boosters. Asking for donations and asking for anyone who might be interested in joining the the um. Boosters that fraternal organization uh in to consider joining. Um, it is an organization that has been, as I said last time, bringing the magic to Alden for the last hundred and one years. It really um. It does a lot for this town, a lot of kind of. Community enhancing, community building activities that frankly, a borough government wouldn't be uh positioned or equipped to do quite so well. Uh, namely, they do um the tree lighting ceremony, the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. They do an Easter egg hunt. They do uh or they have an in with Santa, Santa company. They arrange for Santa Claus to come on Christmas morning. So they're really a a great group of guys. So uh just letting you know to be on the lookout for that. Uh, the only other thing that I will report is that as anyone who may have attended our last couple of caucus meetings will have seen. Or if they've, you know, watched any of our recordings from those meetings, um, we've gone through. The budget proposals, the council went through the budget proposal for the twenty twenty six budget. Um, and it was a a lot of work, so I just want to give, you know, kudos, counsel. For all the thoughtful proposals they put forward. Um, council has whittled it down to um a group that they think would best serve the community. And they're going to see about putting that into the budget. Of course, once it gets into the budget, then they end up coming out of the budget because, you know, things will get prioritized according to what they think. Is in the best interest of the community and is affordable. So uh we uh council, I will also just state that the Public Safety Committee and I did get our proposals uh from the um Police Department. We met with the chief to go over them, and I think the chief is going to be providing us with some additional documentation. So at some point, obviously, you will be brought in on the loop on those. So with that, I conclude my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor and council, the audience? I'll just report to you, being a distribution manager for the.
Yes.
That ninety-four percent of the borough has been confirmed delivered as of.
Oh, right.
Oh.
Okay.
And one needsly section unconfirmed yet, so we get there.
Section thirteen.
For me?
Section thirteen?
No.
Okay.
That's Mr. Duffy's section, for those that don't know. Mr. Duffy, despite his age and the fact that he has moved out of town, insists on delivering his section. He got mad at me when I when I gave it to somebody else, so. Don't mess with Charlie Duffy, okay? Very good. All right, seeing none, moving on to the manager, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to give an update on the building. At this point, phase two is probably eighty-five, ninety percent complete. Garage doors were actually installed today. Uh, the drywall inside the garage stall court is actually complete. We're saying it could be painted probably tomorrow, if not Friday. We moved some of the police stuff in today. We're going to move the desks and the uh towers and all tomorrow. Um. Punch list was performed on Tuesday at a meeting. This point, it wasn't too bad. There's some minor repairs. A lot of nicks and stuff like that because of moving stuff around, but nothing very major at this point. Uh, with school coming back in the session in the next week. We have the crosswalk scheduled to be painted probably next week along with the parking lot. And that is all I have.
Very good. Uh, any questions for the manager, Councilwoman Kelly?
What day is school starting? You know?
I think it's Tuesday in the William.
Well, some of the private schools go back next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the teachers will be in next week.
When you see the crossing guards, that's when they start.
And somebody will be very happy, thank you.
There you go. Uh, speaking of crossing. You have a question, Mr. Walker?
Oh, good.
I was gonna say, speaking of crossing guards, are we fully staffed at this point?
Mr. McNally got a full release from his doctor, so he is going to be on uh, yes.
That's so nice.
Yeah.
He's back, that's what. At least two or three years.
He was out for at least two years, and we wouldn't allow him back until he had a full release from his doctor.
Yeah.
That's been great.
Great news. Mr. Walker, you have a question.
I noticed yesterday, uh, I don't know if you turned them on or off, but the uh flashing lights, the school district, the speed limit. On Woodlawn, they were on in the morning, but traveling on Providence, they were off.
I think there's one of them.
They're they're all turned off. I turned them all off because I didn't have any. The one I couldn't get the box open, ordered to turn it off. At this point, since everything's starting next week, I don't know.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to know like they were working because they.
Yeah.
One section was on and one section was off.
We'll worry about next time signal service comes out, we'll see what.
Yeah.
Key is on that one particular.
Right. I think it's actually more of an issue with the door of the box.
I see.
Maybe damage.
Chief, which which box is that? Is that the one?
It's the one in North on a Woodlawn Avenue, uh, just north of the Trolley Center.
Yeah, that was the one that got hit, right? No, that that was on the other copies of street of the.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Uh, Mr. Mr. White, don't we, doesn't signal service usually come out before school starts to run that through or not?
Well, actually, they used to, and then Steve and I figured out that we, the key that we use for our lights is on same exact gate.
Okay.
But for years and years, we were paying signal service to come out to do a job that we shouldn't.
We're swish. Get a boss.
Yeah, they didn't let us know that. Um, I do have.
Always that way.
I I do have some questions in building one.
Yes, sir.
Did the netting getting sold a little more borough secretary status?
No, that is scheduled for eight AM. On Saturday morning, they are actually already going to do it from the lobby side. They bought plastic on the inside, but I was there when the superintendent discussed it with the contractor. And Debbie, I think, was sitting there too, so we all know when it's getting done.
Yeah, are they going to put that netting over the lobby area as well?
Yes.
And are we going to fix the?
That's a balance issue. So the one.
Water.
The dripping one was ice cold.
Not only are we dropping blood bugs in her, but water is dripping in her.
Right. But it was a very hot summer, so she was grateful for that.
The bugs?
We won't. No, not the bugs. But as far as the dripping of the uh. The AC unit, it was it's because one of them was freezing, the other side wasn't. It's a balance issue.
Okay. Are there? We, I know I talked to you about this the other day, are they? Will the dumpster and the work trailer be removed for the start sweep?
So I threatened him today that if that work trailer is there tomorrow, I'm going to have Cleaver come remove it. And put it wherever they they need to put it. Because I need the lot empty and clean so I can strike that.
Okay.
And if I need to call B and L to move that dumpster, then I will call B and L. But tomorrow is the last day before uh before I start calling people. I mean, we're out of time. I gave you two weeks so far.
Okay.
I have to strike the lot.
You're talking about uh the borough, the, I mean, the supporting one?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we're gonna feel.
It's it's got, oh, we'll, any place where we need patching, I will do when I do the funnel repairs. I'm going to do those when I do my. He's got a couple areas where he did sewer ladder work, so when he does the final act, they're gonna do it all.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, uh, I don't, I didn't, I haven't seen the building since, up close since last Friday, but there was numerous little things. That need to be installed, siding, got that.
That's actually, I think, tomorrow.
Okay.
The problem is, a lot of these contractors are at schools right now, and school coming back in the next week. It's tough to pull them off of there to get to our job because they're also probably ninety percent complete. So there are no hurry to come back to finish the ten percent for us.
Right. All right, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Walker.
Some more of a, I guess, general question, something to be proactive about. So when I came into the building yesterday, uh, I noticed that the crosswalk, there's a new sidewalk leading from Providence up to the building that was no longer there by the big. By the tree and sign. And there's a sign uh that says cross that crosswalk there. You mentioned the crossing guards. I was wondering if there's a way to be proactive in their their training. Whoever's stationed there, put them in Providence, is to watch and monitor how many people actually cross there.
I'll stop you right there.
Really?
I've been coming, I I've been coming out of the parking lot, and people are dodging in between them. It is ridiculous. We've gone to the school, with the school has sent letters out as well. The reason we put the signs up is just for a warning, just to say, look, we have crosswalks. You know, on either side, and you can take your leads, walk in between traffic.
And that and that sidewalks is more of an invitation for them to cross at that section to come into the building. So I'm wondering if that's going to become a problem. Uh.
So I talked about before, at several meetings before, that we should, and I I know I could, Matt, we look to seek for Grant. To have a lit crosswalk there, similar to what you have in Landstone Avenue across the movie theater, where you would hit a button or something similar that would light it up. That is the goal, is to get something like that. Saxor Avenue has.
Exactly, it's 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 the perfect location from the parking lot across the street to the church as well.
Scott, if you stand there and you tell them.
Yeah.
That if she uses the crosswalks, they're gonna flip you off.
Oh, I'm I know that, I've already done that.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm just saying.
I mean.
It's it's a big.
These are moms and grandmoms and dads and grandpops walking little kids with their hands, or the kids are ahead of them, running across the street.
So that's why I just wondered if the crossing guards are able to take note of that, but if you already have.
Well, the problem with crossing guards is then they'll get close enough to tell. They're just cutting right across.
We need a megaphone, a siren.
That should have a good one.
Uh, I do have one of the, what's the status of our digital sign?
He was too busy trying to get everything ready for the police move today for him to do that.
All right.
So hopefully tomorrow, Friday, we're going to run the external line just to check to see if if the underground lines are damaged.
I was just note, thank you, I'm looking for Walker. I go by the Landstone Theater and Saxor Avenue very frequently.
Yeah.
And despite the people pushing the button and the lights flashing. Worse than the school bus, people just blowing through and not stopping for them, even though it's there and the kettle is shiny. It it's not an end all be.
What's the case like a railroad crossing?
Very good.
Now it depends on this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, please, thank you. Uh, any other questions? Thank you very much. Seeing on, uh, moving on, Mr. uh Solicitor, Mr. Paul.
I uh I don't, I don't have anything for the group.
All right, thank you very.
Nothing you want for it.
There'll be plenty coming soon because of pending ordinances.
I can't wait.
Percolating up from the Civil Service Commission and the State Freedom.
Oh, okay.
They're not quite ready yet, but they're close. Any questions for the solicitor? Seeing on engineer, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, short report, uh, the program is scheduled to begin in uh mid-September. Um, tentative date of September eleventh, um, not confirmed yet, but I will update council. Once I have a firm date on that, so it's not to interrupt, but I don't.
A non-fortuitous day, by the way.
Yeah.
Uh, other than that, I can.
Any questions for the engineer? I have two.
Yes.
Uh, how are we doing on our uh rack peak land for the building? Where do we stand?
Uh, so we have a meeting tomorrow, tentative, um, to discuss that. There has been no official update, um, but they have all we they need from us, so it's still in the states.
Uh, the second question, second question deals with the grant for the improvements on West and East Magnolia, Albert Glenwood. I know there was a glitch because when we switched servers for for our email and stuff, apparently we got dropped by the state. And we're in the process, where do we stand on that between the two of you?
So I have to have something notarized, which more or less from the start is more to notarize it. And then I will send it in to make myself another administrator under a.
Un unintended consequences.
Yes.
Okay.
But it has to be notarized before they will even.
I got it, I'm with you. I just knew that they.
So we will do that tomorrow, and then I will start all our.
Magically disappeared from their charts because we changed email address.
I I know.
It's interesting.
We know all the reasons.
They have my name, they have everything.
Phone number, address, all that kind of stuff.
I just.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other questions? Seeing on moving on, uh, treasurer. Are you ranking?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll begin, uh, my report tonight with the general fund, beginning balance of cash on hand is seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. Our receipts for the period were two hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty cents. Our transfers from the grant for the new building was a hundred ninety-four thousand, eleven dollars and thirty-eight cents. And our net expenditures were five hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Leaving us with an ending balance of cash on hand of seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Moving on to the state highway fund, beginning balance of cash on hand was hundred thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our only own income was a dollar fifty-five in the fund in interest. And um our expenditures was three thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Leaving us with an ending balance of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy cents. Finally, in the sewer fund, beginning balance of cash on hand is three hundred fifty-two thousand, forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. We have receipts for the period of five point, five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. Our expenditure was um only eight hundred fifty dollars, leaving us with an ending balance of cash on hand of three hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents. Mr. President, at this time, I would ask council's permission to release funds from the following accounts so we can pay our bills. From the general fund, five hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents. From the state highway fund, three thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. And from the sewer fund, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, uh, treasurer. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report and authorize this first being uh on the bill list? Councilwoman Smythe, is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. President.
Council, Vice President Lambert, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? I said. Very much. You ran along. Uh, reports of the council committees, Public Health, Councilwoman Kelly.
Just a reminder, the next household hazardous waste collection event is going to be September the sixth, which is a Saturday. At the Emergency Services Training Center, sixteen hundred Calvin Hook Road in Sharon Hill. You must register, this is on the webpage, so you can sign up through that. And sort of another emergency management with possible storms coming. It takes only twelve inches of fast-moving water to carry away a small car. So don't drive through standing water, moving water, find another place. And if you think you're okay in an SUV, eighteen to twenty-four inches will carry away most large SUVs. You can never tell how deep the water is, and there could be a really big puddle or no road underneath it. So hurricane season is here, keep an eye out on the roads. And our trash, once again, the most important part of the whole night is. July trash totals, a hundred and seventy-four point five one tons. And our recycling totals are very respectable, three point four three tons. So keep up the good work. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any questions for the councilman and the council? The audience, uh, do we ever, I have a question, do we ever get a total from the recycling that happened at the end of July?
It did not.
Okay. Yeah. And what do we do? We split the credit down the middle with the split the heights?
That we pay January shredding, they pay July. Very good. But the E-cycle, the F is a split.
All right. Uh, seeing on Public Works, Councilman Borders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there were uh three vitals repaired this month uh that weren't on my radar at all. Uh, medicine as I was driving around town. Uh, there's one on Priscilla, one on South Oak, and one on North Bonso. Um, and we are also uh monitoring street depression on North Bonso Avenue, West Wayne Avenue, and South Glenwood in Warren. And uh the residents were asked to please keep your curb lines clean and make sure your sun pumps are discharging onto your ones and not onto the streets or sewers. And that completes my report, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you very much. Any questions for the councilmen? Uh, so we actually had a North Bonso repair, but there's still one that's pending, is that what I understand?
Yeah, apparently, uh, you know, these might be like the first type of repairs.
I knew about, I remember Priscilla coming up at some point in time in the past, they were looking at something over there.
Okay.
Do we, where was the South Oak one? Do we, you know, where that just was?
Where is that? It's not there.
Well, that's a uh property, residential one that's on the borough.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there, yes. Yeah, they're all residential.
They're all residential.
All right. Uh, I, thank you very much. Do we have, I I know you may not know, but they're getting close on Oak and Providence. Any update as to when they might finish with that project?
If I tell you the answer, you're not going to be happy. May thirtieth.
Next year?
No.
Twenty twenty, oh. It was supposed to be done.
May thirtieth.
Well, last week, they were still cutting in towards CBS, all the people.
So what's left at this point, and I know uh the mayor got a complaint about the plate that's on the ground. That is where they're going to tie in from the old to the new. Basically, what they do, and they did the same thing on Clifton Avenue, we had plates in three different areas.
Right.
So, you know, they ran all the individual lines, and then they tie in eventually.
Okay.
That's, so I know it's annoying.
Yeah. The the resident says that it sounds like thunder constantly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just constant like torture.
I'm sure it does.
I gave him my sincerest regrets because I lived through it frankly myself, and unfortunately, being a state highway. Well, gathering was not something reasonable to control.
They were trying to do that in three phases, which was green down to Providence, Providence down to Cottonwood. And from Providence and Oak up to basically CBS, and the last couple of days, I've been going through there, there's nobody there.
No. Yeah, it's last week they were working, but I haven't seen anybody this week.
This week, there's been nobody, so I don't know if this is the thirty to sixty day settlement period, Tony. I mean, there isn't much communication from them, mate. They've already moved on to their next job at this point.
All right, let's just hope it doesn't take as long as it did for Clifton, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, and thank you, Councilwoman Borders. Moving on, Highway Committee, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, not much, uh, I mentioned to uh John about the uh batting cage and trees that are over here. There is a large branch that fell on the batting cage. It's essentially a widow maker, and I think Johnny mentioned those trees are actually on borough property.
Yeah, we actually own, believe it or not, probably a good eight to ten feet past. Banning cages into that house, there's actually a green post in the parking lot corner, that's our property.
Yeah, I don't think those trees have ever been looked at because they're quite, they gave some from it. So I I let him know, um, Matt knows from AYC, I don't know who's going to take down the the big branch, but we'll figure that out. But just a safety concern.
I'm actually going to send it to Higgins.
Okay. Um, I have a bit of time, and so I'd like to go out relatively soon and start straightening some of our street signs.
Thanks.
And because they, yeah, they're a little, uh, some of them are a bit wonky and need to be. More upright, and I was wondering, what is, is there a good way to loose street signs?
Uh, there's actually Jim has a tool.
He has a tool to do that?
It's me, it's one of where he lets them out, he may have to re-install them, but.
Yeah.
It's something, it's kind of like a jack where.
That's what I thought it might be, okay. Because I was going to say, I don't really want to take my truck and start hitting street signs and straight. I can use this truck, that's true. So, uh, I I do want to take some time and go and try to straighten those things. And we already mentioned school is starting, so that means we're going to have more activity at our crosswalks, AKA and also our buses. And I think one of the questions for uh the chief are, is the school district touch date with all of the cameras? Do they fully get them installed on their buses?
Um, I can't give an answer on it, it's a hundred percent. I mean, to my knowledge, uh, it would be probably close to that, if not, it is at a hundred percent.
Okay. So just reminding all of our residents to obey the rules of the road, especially when it comes to school buses, do not pass them. They have the yellow lights on, slow down, red lights, um, so you're not passing. So if you do see somebody uh passing the school bus with their, the stuff, the swing arm out and the lights on. Take down the license plate on nine one one. Help them out. The bus drivers are supposed to do the same thing, uh, take down their plates, but I think that's all. But try to keep all of them safe as possible.
The only thing with that, the caveat with that is we we need that witness to show up in court.
Uh, okay.
So. As long as they're willing to show up in court.
Take your day off and help a kid.
How about it?
Which is why the cameras were installed. They're on the block.
Yeah.
Certainly, that that.
Uh, thank you, please, Mayor Ford.
Thank you very much, Councilman Walter. Is there a question for the council? Mr. Morgan.
Uh, well. I didn't know if so much of a question, but more an observation, speaking of highway safety and stuff like that. Apparently, there's been an explosion of e-bikes.
Yes.
In the area, and uh I was driving somewhere Magnolia. I think I was getting a row rolling up on an intersection that, you know, it's a four-way stop. And as I'm, it's kind of the bike just flew flew right through it, probably twenty, thirty miles an hour. Now, and uh, of course, no helmet. Um, so, you know, I know there's been other, you know, incidents in neighboring boroughs where, you know, young children have.
Scooters.
Yes, the the scooters, you know, and stuff like that, but uh, yeah, where they've gotten, you know, seriously injured. And, you know, with that, no helmets, but uh. And there's some local municipalities are discussing may dating, helmets under a certain age.
I have a for talent chips working on orders at this point, but.
Well, I thought Pennsylvania law was twelve and under, you have to wear a helmet. Is that correct?
Well, I'm going to ask the chief, do we ask the chief, are e-bikes under any regulation from the state for traffic? Because I've seen the same thing, I've been in the intersection, and it's a red light, and the bike just blows right through the red light. Thank gosh, there was nobody coming.
They they're they're supposed to follow the same rules as a pedal bike. So you're supposed to stop at red lights for pedal bikes as well.
Yes.
So.
I wonder if they'll change the, the, the rules at some point or the laws because it's a voter.
I know that there's legislation, they're trying to push through legislation on raising the age of a person that is going to be allowed to operate one. So that's something that could try to push through.
Is there, Senator Corney actually is proposing legislation. Is there any, is there any age limit now?
Not for, well, not for scooters or anything like that.
What's the age limit that the senators propose that we know there? It's a well, though, I mean, I've been listening and reading about what happens for its going through, because that's where the young lady. Who's killed. So they've been kind of in the forefront of the neighborhood in the area, so we need.
I saw, I saw a couple of kids, they go, they went on the, from, uh, down the Springfield Road. And then rode on the left side of the street. On the sidewalk and it was caused a ton of damage when they saw that. They're not always good at road following the rules of the road.
Well, e- even bicycles, they start to follow the same.
I know.
Rules and their bicycles are supposed to be on the street, not on the sidewalk. Uh, and stopping at stoplights, stop signs. So. Are, will the police take any action? They see.
Well, there are no one thing with scooters and e-bikes is, we're not getting into a pursuit over. Anything like that where they were gonna run into traffic and. I mean, we have a pretty strict pursuit policy. To begin with, so. Just for safety reasons, I mean, if we're able to stop somebody who's operating one erratically, safely if we're able to stop them, then we will. But if they choose to flee. Then we have to take into account the risk versus benefit over. A total seventy, seventy-five violation or a traffic violation. Which our policy is that we can attempt to stop right now. But we are now allowed to pursue for motor vehicle violations or misdemeanor offenses.
We'll have to get you your pedal bikes.
They don't, I was thinking about getting one of those e-scooters.
What's your proposal? Season is still open, Chief.
Probably a couple hundred bucks.
Right.
For the scooters anyway.
Alright, Chief, like, they don't, unlike a motorbike or, uh. I've seen small motorbikes that have to have been registered. E-bikes are not required.
Right.
Even though they're motorized, they have to be registered as a moving vehicle. That would, that would slow things down.
I mean, it really comes down to, well, especially with kids. I know. Those of us who have kids, you know, trying to be on top of them twenty-four seven, especially when they're teenagers, it's kind of. Hard to do, but it starts in the home with the education, with the, you know, stuff like that, so. Always stress that.
Chief, I would have to say what I've witnessed is not just kids.
No, I know.
It's adults that do the same thing.
I, I, I know, I know. You know, especially the ones that are doing deliveries.
Oh, yes.
You know, so he's on Amazon deliveries and Uber Eats deliveries on the motorbikes that are coming out of the city, so.
Alright, um, any other questions?
I was gonna say you should incorporate something into one of our upcoming events with a safety thing. And if you have one or get one in the future, you could do, instead of ice cream with the chief or coffee with the chief, you could do. A scooter bike or a bike ride with the chief to do some safety tips, you know, make, make fun and interact.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. I thought they, because of the way it was designated. Uh, the second street here did not look at those trees that we talked about with the batty cage area.
I didn't say they did.
Oh, so they did.
Mr. Walker.
That's what he's, that's what I, that's what I heard, but they have, they did look at them.
They did.
They did.
Yeah, only because I let them know that that's our property.
As, Mr. Walker, I have actually straightened a couple of signs myself. I've been able to do with bikes. They weren't strangled, I dug them out, pushed them and then put it in.
I've done that as well. They don't stay.
Well, the ones I've done, of only a few, they've managed, I keep checking them and they've managed to stay, but I know there's a bunch that are very severely moved.
Most of the time that stubs bent.
I will just ask this, because I know Mr. Porter, who was just up last week talking about bus cameras, have you heard back anything from your, uh.
No, sorry.
Appealing of the. Very good. Moving on. Oh, there's a question? I'm sorry, I was about to move on to the highway. Did you have a question there?
Uh, no, I have a, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
In reference to the, uh, bus cameras.
Yes.
Last night, I think it was Action News, they were reporting one of the counties that's now starting for this school season. And they mentioned that Delaware County, a couple of the counties who already have them, so they said it as though we're covered. That we already have them, but I heard the chief say they're not all installed yet.
Well, I can't say that they are or aren't. I don't, I don't have that knowledge. I can surprise that. They're probably, if not at a hundred percent, close to it.
Okay.
I know the ones that are in our area that do Alden do have. So.
Yeah, they were showing.
Plus, not all the school districts may have installed them yet. A bunch, a bunch of school districts in the county have, they've been on all of them.
That's correct.
Uh, yes, two borders.
There's also a scam going around with those cameras in Darby Barrow. I was sent a notice. They wanted three hundred dollars sent to Boston. I went and talked to the police department. And it's not real scam.
Yeah, the real tickets come with a picture of you going by the house. Don't they, buddy?
Yes.
Yes.
How could it get your picture?
With the women who were in the car with me, there was no way they'd let me pass.
People from the plane, I said, well, that's you. It's your car anyway.
Yeah, there's also a website, if it lists on that letter, a website you can go, you can actually view the video. So.
Well, of course she could, that was. And why would Pennsylvania have received money in the Boston management shoes?
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a third party, it's a contracted company. They have facilities, there's one in Virginia, I believe, buddy, yours came back in Virginia, and there's another one as well where. That's where they're operating out of. It's an actual private company that's doing this. So, but in that letter it does have, you can go to a website to pay, pay, pay payment. You can also view your violation.
Yes, that went right to the police department. I heard this was going. And they did scan quite a few people out that got their money back as a victim.
So. Complaint needs to be filed with the State Attorney General if, 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 if that's happening.
Yes.
So I hope, I hope you did that.
No, because I expected the police to do something and they told me they had better things to take care of.
Yeah, so this is, this is something that would go to like the Bureau of Consumer Protection, because this is more of a, a, a civil issue.
Was not reported by me, but it has been reported because I put the word out.
Okay, because this, this is the kind of thing where it, it could actually be the actual company that's contracted being too aggressive in. In their collection, and that's something that the attorney general needs to be aware of. Yes.
Anything else? Thank you all very much. Vice President Lambert, Public Safety.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I have the July. Police activity report for Alden. In the month of July, the Alden Police Department logged seven hundred and eighty-six incident reports. And included in these incident reports were twenty-two domestic disturbances, ten disputes. Five disorderly conducts slash harassment, nineteen suspicious activity. Four thefts, two missing persons, hope they were found. Twelve motor vehicle accidents, two subjects in mental crisis. And two protection from abuse services. And the officers, um, and the chief. Patrolled three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six miles. And there were one hundred and fifteen traffic citations issued. There were forty-five parking tickets issued and five criminal arrests. And I also have the Clifton Heights Fire Department, Fire Company, uh, report from the chief. There were nine alarms in Alden. And those nine alarms, there was a residential building fire. There was an investigation and an alarm system check, CO2 alarm, there were three of those. And assist EMS and the approximate. Damages lost in Alden for, it was a building. Three thousand five hundred dollars for building and contents. And the reported losses in Alden Borough for this period. So it was approximately six hundred dollars for a deck.
Six hundred dollars for what?
A deck.
Okay.
That's what it says. And then the overall times in service were twenty hours and twenty-seven minutes with an average of eighteen point three minutes per alarm. And, um, there were continued trainings. Uh, that they attended, um, hundred fifteen members attended training and special, uh, assignments. And also since the, the, um. Last month, we had the National Night Out. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank the, uh, police, our police department. As well as the Clifton and Collingdale Fire Companies who came out and everyone who assisted. Council members as well as, uh, the public who assisted with setup, cleanup. And just being inviting and of course, people are now asking, when is the next event? Because they had such a, uh, good, um, experience with that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions to the councilman, Mr. Walker?
Sorry, because it just caught my ear. Did you say seven hundred and eighty-six incidents?
Yes.
That includes all the things she talked about, traffic stops, tickets.
Yeah, I counted that. That's eighty-three. And then you mentioned a hundred and fifteen traffic violations, forty-five and then five arrests. That doesn't equate to seven eighty-six, which means if it is seven eighty-six, it's twenty-six incidents a day happens.
Incident reports that are logged. Or incident reports that are logged, which encompasses almost a lot of things that we do, so.
Okay. That's a lot.
We're almost a do a lot.
Let's consider an incident, though.
Anything, it's pretty much a lot of things that they do. I mean, everything from handling radio calls to. Self-initiated things to foot patrols, to everything, everything that we do.
I can give you some, so it's domestic disturbances, disorderly conduct, fights, disputes. Public intoxication, suspicious activity, thefts, missing persons, motor vehicle accidents. Persons in mental crisis, protection from abuse orders. And that's, you know, this, just some of them. So they're listed, um, for the total and then out of those, those are some of the. But there's not just one, like there's twenty-two of these, nineteen of those, twelve of these, four, so.
Yeah, I wrote down the numbers. I, I was just, it, it caught my ear and I'm like, that seems incredible.
Well, they have to log a lot of things that we do. They're also do a lot.
I may not have listened to the prior months or.
Yes.
This is a consistent.
I think my desk is down.
If I could ask the chief, so, uh, a foot patrol is considered an incident?
They have to log everything. They have to log everything.
So the word incident is not.
It's logged incident report.
Log accident.
So.
That's more like log activity.
Right, like I said, we have to document almost everything that we do.
Okay, so they're not incidents. Right, 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 okay.
Maybe activity that's logged, which I think it's good of a logging. I just think the word incident sounds a little bit like.
Yeah.
Like we've got lots of problems.
Right.
Yeah, is there a way to separate that, like?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Is there a way to separate that to say it's an activity and then this is.
Sure, we can do that, absolutely.
So then you have a better feel of what's really going on?
Yeah, that's, yeah, absolutely.
We, Corey, the Public Safety Committee, we can go through what the incidents are and decide what they grew up, you know.
We always historically labeled, listed in the reports even before us, all the incident reports.
Incidents, yeah. So a lane in the word incident sounds like there was, you know.
Criminal activity.
Someone was pulled over. Suspicious activity. What do you think a foot patrol would be an incident?
Right.
Right, that's why the number in, in time, like. Alright, I'm gonna write this out next.
I thought I had, um, last month to see, but that's, that's about the amount that I report.
Every, you know, sometimes a little higher, a little lower, but ironically, I assisted a resident today, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. That I reached out to the mayor and to get some assistance with it. And one of the things he said as he was finishing the call, he said, uh, he's lived in Alden, he's over on Maryland Avenue. Said, I've lived in Alden for twenty-six years and one of the reasons that I continue to stay in Alden is because I feel like it's a safe community.
Thanks to our chief and our PD. And our residents, by the way. I should probably give credit to them too. Uh, be- before we move on, I just wanna thank, uh, Captain, is that correct? Captain Phil Thomas. Please extend our thanks to.
We'll do.
Clifton Fire Company, we're beating there. I know we don't have, we thank, we thank you guys when you were there, but your, your presence at. That event really made it special, so please let them know. We really appreciate it.
We'll do it.
Is it?
Yes.
Any, any other questions for the councilmen? I was gonna acknowledge, uh, the captain. Do you have anything to report from the, mayor's always one of the. Is there, is there anything that you have to report in terms of the, the fire company, Clifton Heights or not?
Next month, we'll have, I think you have in our open house for, uh. No, not next month. Not going, first Friday in October, we'll have our open house for fire prevention. Um, so I'll probably make an announcement about that in the upcoming month.
Send the details to the mayor and post it. Do it sooner and then we can, I can schedule a thing to go up on Facebook. And, you know, maybe we can even send out an email blast to the town to let them know. That's, that would be a really nice.
Yep, because I know ours is Friday. I believe Collingdale's had theirs off the Thursday before ours.
Perfect. That's terrific. Great.
That's about it.
Good, thank you very much. What? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just thought when you said about having that on Sunday, um, State Representative Heather Boyd had her. Gathered here for the backpack giveaway and they gave out safety information and, um, things with the utilities and all. It was well-attended over here on the billings, so that was, that was there.
So it was not a worthy day of happening.
Nor was I. That's nice.
You didn't read your.
She sent a blast.
She sent a blast.
I'm sure she notified us that she was doing.
There it is, in black and white.
Talking to the borough as opposed to sending out a blast, is that true or not?
No, she's gotta ask the youth permission.
Right, okay.
Yeah. No, they never just, I think they always ask.
Alright.
Wasn't that a thing?
Uh, anything else? Seeing none, very good, moving on. Uh, Law and Orders, uh, Councilman Blunt. Although we do not need to make a motion because, as I said to the council members. Neither the borough manager or I were a hundred percent sure until we checked with the mayor, but by then it was too late, it had already been posted, so. We do not need to reappoint Mr. Thomas. He's already, he's already done in the middle.
June or July?
I thought he did Dan. I know he did the other.
So he came in, this again, your meeting, had to go.
That's right.
Alright, Councilor, one, one last thing for you to worry about tonight.
Um, okay, for the month of July, we processed fifty-five applications approving forty-eight. Uh, permits with a fee value of ten thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents. There were seven permit fees doubled. For starting work without a permit, for fines of two thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents. Total income for permit fees and fines was twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, there were fifty-eight site visits, uh, this month, the usual, uh, pre, pre-order expenses with, et cetera. Eight sale inspections, six rental inspections. Five rental re-inspections and two transfer re-inspections. Total income for the month of July was fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents. That's it. I have no significant updates on any of the projects, but I've already been talking.
Alright, any questions for the councilwoman? See, I have, uh, I'll address this to Mr. Cartaglio because I know I've been, what is the status of our friendly golf station at Springfield in Providence? I noted that they were, have been doing work off and on and over last week and they finally, finally fenced the property. You have any further updates for us?
Only that they paid for it, picked up their apartments and they're proceeding with replacement of the spencers and a replacement of the concrete.
Are they gonna do the sidewalks and the curbs that you had marked or what's the status on that?
They're not opening unless they do.
Okay. Uh, the other question that came up is that our, uh. Holcombe. At two twenty North Woodlawn, I noticed that there was tree work that was done there. Have we heard any other information about their? Or them or what?
I haven't, but I think the councilmen, they have confirmation.
Alright, Mr. Mr. Boarder.
I stumbled onto a impromptu, or, you know, I, I just happened to stumble onto this meeting. Uh, it wasn't an impromptu meeting, but we weren't ready, but I some, I crashed it anyway. Uh, between Heather Boyd and Gina Curry. Representatives from, uh, Congresswoman Scanlon's office and from Senator Fetterman's office. We all said that.
Where was there?
At the apartment complex.
Okay.
Two twenty North Woodlawn. Okay, and, uh, took a brief tour of the property. You know, there's a basement room, they're gonna turn into a community room. You know, for people, you know, for the residents kinda hanging out. Uh, took a tour of two of the available apartments, uh, you know, a, a one bedroom and a two bedroom. Um, you know, they've done some renovations, they've done a lot of electrical work. Uh, they've done some tree work and cleaning up the property and stuff like that. Uh, they would like to, uh, get some roof work done, uh, also, uh, fixing the bricks and so on and so forth. And we're looking at moving in soon. And, uh, they also expressed an interest in, uh, talking with the borough, you know, and addressing the residents to. Alliviate any of their concerns. Uh, alleviate any of their concern, uh, you know, with, you know, cause I. Uh, talked about the rumor mill that's going on a- around town, you know, and all the mysterious people that are gonna be there, it's like, no, 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 these are. Basically, people have had issues with maintaining their life. Okay, now it's a mental health treatment, this, no, not treatment facility, but rehabilitation facility. Okay, so these are people that have, you know, this was like their last step, it's a voluntary program, okay? Uh, they're referred by the county to, uh, Holcombe, you know, Chimes. And, uh, this is kinda like their last step in their rehabilitation before they go out and become functioning members of society. So, you know, they're taught how to live, how to cook, how to clean your house, uh, there's somebody on site to make sure that their medications. Are taken in, uh, at the appropriate times, uh, they're required to work, um. And, uh. Uh, you know, so pay part of the rent, stuff like that, so, uh. You know, I, I, I got a very positive impression from them, you know, but there's, there's still work to be done in the facility, but.
I, they were planning to go in there, I believe, in January. The last, when we went through this last year, the last tenant's, uh, rental lease. Was up in March, so that was their initial, and as you know, we went through a number of meetings.
Yes.
And got them, another thing you said is unfamiliar to us here on the council or we've mentioned at a public meetings. Was there anybody there from the county by any chance, Mr. Bould?
That I did not see.
It would have been nice, did we get notified at all that this was happening?
Sounds to me like they're looking for state funds.
Yes.
That's settled.
Well, if they want the borough to be, you know, this is not.
This is the first I've heard of it was.
But I would say that there was also when this originally happened, we were.
Never.
We didn't know about it until a resident came in that happened to know about it through her job. That they were going for this, uh, grant money and was the same like we were having. So I will just have to say, and I know this is publicly recorded, they do not have the best track record. Of communicating with the borough, I said, it would've been nice to have one of our representatives there to walk through with them.
Well, it was nice.
Because he stumbled upon it, not because we were invited to be part of it, that's why I asked if the county.
I did reiterate that, you know, I was like, when this deal went through, we were kind of on, on its side, we had no idea.
It sounded like you represented us.
They said, you know, it's like, this is our first time doing something like this, um, you know, we made a lot of mistakes trying to rectify that as a. We're, we're nice people, we don't bite, you know, come talk to us, so she did, uh, what one of the representatives, you know, I've got a. File card, you know, business cards that I gave to the mayor, uh, they did express interest in addressing council and, and public forum and. And, uh, you know, so, you're probably not this month, obviously they're not here, but, uh, possibly in September.
Thank you for getting all of these contacts. Yeah, let us, let's tell them to let us know, well, you know, like, they have to let us know, they just can't just kinda pop up.
You know, so contact the borough or the mayor or, and, uh, you know, so, yeah, get on the agenda.
Mr. Cartaglia, what kind of permits do they have that they have not yet executed? I remember you mentioning that quite a while ago, is that the only thing that's outstanding at the moment?
They, that they haven't done, the, the only thing they haven't done is roofing. They did the electrical work, they did the concrete work, they've done some repair work, but the roofs, as far as I know, have not been completed.
So the apartments that you looked at, were they rehabbed already or they needed to be rehabbed?
I, I don't know what they looked like before, I think they were certainly cleaned enough, you know, they were all the same color, there's, you know, it's like they were talking about getting some of the floors redone. Hardwood floors, and they're, uh, you know, it's like the bad, um, you know, it's old, it's dated. You know, but it's certainly, it's certainly seem functional.
Yeah, Council Vice President Lambert.
The parts that you have, should we be reaching out to them? You're thinking that we're gonna wait for them?
No, no, we better reach out. I was gonna ask the, the.
The mayor's gonna email me all the contact information, I'll reject.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we don't.
It would be nice.
It'd be nice, we would have been happy to send somebody over the long officially. Not just happen when we walk through the neighborhood and say, oh, there's activities on our area.
So the facilities manager, Mr. Taylor, that's, that's, what does that mean, facilities manager? He doesn't, he's not gonna work there, he's, I see he's got an attached address, so he just oversees the. Your supervisor.
Yeah, 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 it's like the ma- maintenance supervisor.
Did they, is that, is there an indication as to which one of those people we should contact?
You know who I think we should contact, the director of government and community relations.
Okay.
Ms. Chelsea Lewis, I will give her a.
I don't recognize any, I don't recognize any of those names. I don't remember any of those names from our previous discussions. Lawrence, Mr. Burns, you have something to add to this conversation?
Um, if, I don't know the current or existing history of the building, but. If there was a change in use, they would have to apply for a planning module, which would require.
They're.
They, yeah, we finished.
They, they're using it, they're renting out the facility, they just happen to own it, and they're actually, as Mr. Board has indicated from their. Their, uh. Discussions with us is that they, the people who have to work will be going to school and part of what they have to do is they have to pay. At least part of the rent for the facility, they may not be able to afford a hundred percent, but they have to pay something towards their housing, they're supposed. Basically, and I believe the term limit is two years, to be in that facility. And then they're supposed to move on to another, it's basically a training ground for them, so that they're able to handle their own lives, so it's not. It's really a rental facility that they just happen to own.
And they don't get, they don't, they're not provided healthcare services there?
No, only there's a, there's a, there's a person on staff to make sure that the medication that they're supposed to take is taken at the proper time. And that if they have to have any kind of psychological or the treatment, they have to be taken off site to the facilities that Holcombe. And Chimes own to, to do that. Yeah, it was a long and painful process to get to that.
And, and apparently most of their referrals through the program, uh, come through the county.
Which is why I'm surprised there wasn't a county representative walking around. Cause we did meet with counties people too. Thank you very much, I'm glad you stumbled on that, you would have had no idea that they would do that, actually I did there. Alright, any other questions? Thank you very much, councilwoman, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to finance, Councilwoman Smythe.
Didn't mean to present it. Reasons for the mansion, well, but I was near someone to have.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, um, reserve account balance reconciled as of July three first, twenty twenty-five, John reserve. Twenty-four thousand seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Bill of reserve, three hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and twenty-eight cent. Police capital reserve, fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Bond one, five hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Bond two, ninety-five thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. The other thing I was just gonna bring to your attention is, um, right now I'm taking. Several classes and as I stumble across things that I think will be helpful to the borough, I'll just inform you. Uh, apparently there's a force fuel credit, a force fuel tax credit going around on, on social media. They're saying that you can use that to, um, get more credits on your income taxes and as a result get a refund. So be cautious with what you read on social media, cause obviously, there's a lot of people out here just trying to. Give you incorrect information, the other thing is that there's a lot of, um, fake charities going around. Asking you for donations, and those donations may not meet the standard donations that the government will allow. You to have that credit, and if you do wanna donate some money and you're not sure. There is, you can go to IRS T E O S tools to verify if that organization is among. The ones that the IRS will recognize, um, the other thing is that, um, the treasurer and I. Are still working on, um, if we're gonna get a new accounting system. And we're waiting to have a meeting with the, um, accountant. And once she gets back, I mean, we'll, we'll talk to the company again, and I'll keep you informed once I know more. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, councilwoman, any question for the councilwoman? Uh, it's tangential, I guess, but I don't know if the manager or the borough, uh, treasurer know, do you know how much we. Paid on the building to date?
Yes. Uh, three million dollars.
Okay.
With a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with just five percent sitting in retention.
But we also have had multiple changes.
Well, yeah, that.
I'm sure that's.
Well, the change orders are included in that.
Oh, they are.
That's part of the payout.
Okay, so there are still a few bills that will come, so.
There's roughly another three hundred thousand due.
Which is, we anticipate, with basically three point, almost three point two, and we were indicating a reserve of. Three point five was our, like, top line, we're gonna be underneath that?
We'll be.
Alright. Always have to have a contingency fund.
Yep.
Uh, any other questions for the councilwoman, thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, moving on, reports of the boards and commissions, zoning hearing board, uh, had no meetings. Uh, planning commission, Councilwoman Kelly, as a member of the Gush body.
We had a wide-ranging discussion about new things to look at, things that have been recommended. So we are still looking at the conservation overlay, the private towing. We're looking at a potential listening session later in the year, just to let people know what we do as the planning commission. What we don't do, that we don't make the laws, we just write things up and submit them. Um, and just getting ourselves organized again.
Yeah, we have had a couple of people that have recently submitted applications, so we're reviewing those and hopefully in the near future it will be rebolstered.
Thank you.
Again, uh. Anything else to report? Uh, alright, I'm just asking if she has anything, I think you're fine. No, no, you're not. I, I managed, as a non, as a non-member now, I did manage to make the meeting, so I know what you're talking about, Mary, you have something?
Yeah, can I report?
So, thank you, so, uh, for private towing, oh, the planning commission is, is it related to that giant? I didn't know that, okay. It's, it's been on the burner and they're looking at trying to.
That would be great.
You know, it seems like that activity slowed down a little bit.
Yeah, so now's a good time to do it when there's, it's, we can take our six months or so to do it.
I know the chief said in the past that they ramp up and then they relax for quite a period of time and then they come back at people again. And that was because people that were there were parting because of Septa. And they were, they were, they, anyway, I was not particularly happy with where they handled it. And as Mr. White has mentioned, uh, the people that have taken them to court, they overcharge those people and they've got. They won at the court level, whether those people got their money back yet, I don't know. Uh, but, you know, we do not have a regulation and because of that, they can only go by what the state law is and they're. Charging more than the state law requires.
Okay, court has acknowledged our fees.
Right, and that's what they charged them, right, so. Uh, it was unfortunate the way that it was handled. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Councilwoman Kelly, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Recreation board, uh, Mr. Walker.
Yes, uh, we did not have a meeting, did not have a meeting, not in August, but in July, spoke about it at that last council meeting. And we are looking to partner with the pool in October for a, uh, pumpkin carving contest, a trunk or treat style. Halloween-ish activity, uh, we're just trying to figure out if we're gonna be able to have a movie available. Through Trilogy Entertainment, uh, in collaboration with the pool, I did find out through Dave, uh, the, uh, pool manager. That one of their staff members left, the one that was the coordinator of all of their events, so it's kind of still going right now. Uh, but something to talk about in our September meeting, which is actually on September eighth, I saw down here at the bottom, it says September fifteenth. But it's actually September eighth.
I see that.
Uh, so that will be part of our discussion going into October is finalizing what that looks like and what we'll need to do. Uh, towards the end of October, which then leads into our fall festival, Philly cook-off, extravaganza. Anything else to add to or more something?
Now you gotta go. Do you have a date for the fall extravaganza?
November eighth, right, the second Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday, no, it's gonna be your joint.
Saturday, September, or sorry, November eighth, right, the second Saturday, yeah, that's what we did it last year, worked out fantastic.
And what's on?
We might push it a little later, so we're not sure yet. Last year was from three to five, and we might push the, depending on lighting, if we get a movie involved.
Any questions for the council, then about the record? Moving on, short commission, I will recognize, uh.
Last Thursday, we, uh, met at the museum to get overlay of everything, we came, uh. Locked, we didn't lock down some days, but we came up with some great ideas about opening the museum to the public, at least every other month with some. Theme, um, days around that, so if we open for an event, it would be a theme for that event, so it's Veterans Day. Uh, Veterans in Alden, uh, we got a Facebook page, so, um. If you're on Facebook, Alden Historical Commission on Facebook, uh, we're going to try and post weekly. And for residents to post, uh, memories as well and facts, um. And we got a nice little tour by Paul, the museum and different things on there, so. If anyone would like to come and join us and enjoy in the history and memories of Alden, please do, we're gonna start also walking days for meetings. Um, every other month as well, as the, uh, weekend meets, and we are also talking about digitizing. What we can in the museum to put on either a webpage or some kind of social media or at least back up what we have. In any cases.
By me, Mr. President, the, uh. I found an interesting app that could expedite, facilitate our scanning. Well, basically, you could put multiple photos on a table and zip with your phone. And it'll individually scan all of them in one fell swoop, so we'll have to look at that as an option. I don't know what the quality will be like.
You got a free scanner.
I know, we were talking about.
Definitely, it's only like a certain size, so we would only be able to observe documents, not all.
And I, my concern is whoever we get to do this might end up in the loony bin because there's so much to scan. And, you know, I know some people get into that rhythm of things, like, the, the, but not me, and I think, you know, there would be. A lot, there would be like liability concerns from one side of the borough, that we end up setting, and putting someone in the mental hospital.
Yeah.
A intern.
Well.
So anyway, there's options that we got, and we're looking at potentially another standard.
Yeah, we're looking at just, we really wanna just, uh, make sure that we're safeguarding all the documents and items that are in the museum. So, you know, in case another car hits it or lightning, we don't want that. There are some things that are, you know, in fireproof, uh, filing cabinets, but not everything is. And then we're also going to just try and get more stuff on display, so that when the museum is open, like on Christmas. Uh, there's, you know, this is Christmases from past and people can donate, even if it's just a copy, and then we'll try and have the, everything on display. So it's more of a memory walk-in group.
And, you know, ideally, we'd love to have almost like the Historical Commission Museum online, you know, so that. You know, we could have all this stuff scanned, so people could go through online and it could be shown on Facebook. So, that's, dream a little dream with us, right?
Great job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and anybody else that's helping out, there have been some people that have expressed this, that as well, we'll see about getting more support.
Yeah.
In that direction.
Uh, Councilwoman.
Question for Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I, on our webpage, we've got like the community and links to different webpages, could you add? The Historical Commission's Facebook link on that, just as a.
Should, not only that, but.
Shade tree.
Shade trees.
That.
Record. All of it's, great idea.
Now that we have.
Good boy. Need to control.
Cut private social media, let it is coordinated.
You're gonna do it?
No, it's not my area of expertise. I first thought that I was.
I thought the president would.
I'd have to go to class for a long time to be.
Oh, no.
Uh, anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Civil Service Commission, our, uh, chair is, uh, out of the country at the moment on a well-deserved.
Brand.
Yes, um, so I will, I'll let you know and this, I will also let this about, goes with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. They are both getting close to preventing councils with ordinances.
Presenting.
Presenting to council.
Preventing.
No, presenting, presenting ordinances to council for their consideration. The plan is they're gonna let me know when that's gonna happen and we will be zooming those meetings and recording them so that the council members can come in physically, met or, uh, residents as well or watch online so that when they come and make a formal presentation, we are, have enough background that we can ask intelligent questions of them. And then obviously it's gonna be, that's what I was warning you about. It's gonna be turned over, uh, to our solicitor in order to review to make sure we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. And they're both getting close. They're not there yet, but they're getting closer. Probably October, November is what we're looking after them to make presentations, just so that you're aware of what's happening. Um, and I thank the chief. He was at the second meeting that he's been to. I actually made this one, last one, as I was coming in in June, they were about to walk out the door. Uh, um, the JP Advisory Committee also is making same center project. And I know when I looked at it, they did a wonderful job of cutting out ivy. Thank you, Mr. Borders, for pointing out this tree in the corner back here.
Yes, it's all the picture time and I had a chance to.
Oh, and let me tell you, some of those vines are really thick that they have to cut through. And I know they did a tree up at this, at the, uh, school. I haven't looked at that one. And they also did a, a private residence. So they're planning to do more events like that, to save your tree by cutting away the ivy that's growing on it. Um, anyway, that's where we stand with that. Any questions about those committees? Seeing them and move on. Is there any unfinished business? I don't believe so. Uh, new business, there are numerous meetings coming up in the month of September. Borough Caucus will be on Wednesday, September third at seven thirty. The Civil Service Commission will meet the next Wednesday here on the tenth at seven thirty. Planning Commission will meet the following day, Thursday, the eleventh at seven thirty. The rec board meeting will be the eighth, not the fifteenth at seven. The Shade Tree Advisory Committee will be, was it sixteenth at seven thirty? I think they canceled last meeting.
Okay, not this one.
But not this one, yes, because they, they actually had an intermediary meeting because they're working on this and I remember when I was there, I think I remember them saying, because of vacations, they weren't gonna meet last night. Uh, and the council will have the regular meeting on September seventeenth at seven thirty. All of those will be held here at the John P. McLean Community Center. Uh, privileges on the floor. I don't know. Right, okay. Thank you, Mr. DeMiko. Uh, seeing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Smythe, is there a second? Councilman Borders, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? No, have it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I have a question.